I'll call Dunbar and order a select meeting to order. All three selectmen are present. Tom Interstrater is present. The Secretary is present. And Mr. Lee Martell is recorded for those who wish to attend. Actually, it was always. Okay, gentlemen, I have four sets of minutes.
Bob, you want the first one?
Sure. Motion to accept the minutes for the January 10th regular meeting is amended.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, gentlemen, on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the non-public meeting minutes for January 10th. Time stays on the mic.
January 10th?
Seal it.
Yeah, those are sealed. And the time on those was, we entered at 8:58 and concluded at 9:11 p.m.
Okay. And I'll second.
Any discussion in those minutes? Just a reminder, those are sealed, gentlemen.
Uh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion to accept the workshop minutes of January 14th. I think there was a couple amendments. I think there were a couple of changes.
There were minimal changes.
Yeah, so I'll say is amended.
I'll second this motion.
I just want to say it was a great meeting, gentlemen. I thought we did a lot of work done and showed them all the time. I say thank you. All in favor of this?
Aye.
And then we had a non-public on the same day, on Thursday, January 14th. I have one more.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the non-public workshop meeting minutes on January 14th.
What time is it?
Second.
Any discussion in those minutes, gentlemen?
Just the time, Mike.
The time was, we had that at, uh...
Eight o'clock, I think.
Eight p.m.?
This is for Bob and for me.
The time is wrong here. I don't think we're that late.
Yeah, we were. I'm up here at eight thirty.
Eight, 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 eight.
Oh, the workshop?
The workshop. I believe that was about six. I think we have a...
Oh, you're right. It was 6:15. Did I say eight? It must have been six.
Yeah. We're going to make a pen change here.
Yep.
Change.
That can be sealed.
Yeah, that's ready to be sealed. So let's, uh, what was the last thing we did today? It was six, 6:15?
Yeah, because this one here...
Started at four, so...
Oh, I see the long term of this.
No, we started at four. Let's get these correct.
It was 6:15 that we adjourned the meeting.
Adjourned, so we started running at 6:00 p.m.
Four p.m., huh?
No, this is for the non-public. It was after we completed.
I think they seconded their meeting.
All in favor of the non-public for that workshop session?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to start off with public comment. I'm starting. Is anything from the back going?
Yeah, Lee Martell. Every week you acknowledge me for recording.
Yes.
And I've been doing it for like around five years now.
Okay.
But...
You can't get a pay raise.
I, yeah, I know. I'll talk about that later.
Okay.
No, but I wanted to acknowledge Linda Nickerson. Puts these on the website for every week. She hasn't missed a week. So it's not just myself doing this. It's Linda Nickerson also.
So I want to say on the record, Linda Nickerson, we acknowledge her contribution.
She works every week on this.
And kudos to you. I say it on the record. Excellent. Thank you. In other words, it's a team effort.
It is, yes.
Okay.
Christopher Malorn with the Police Department. Just a couple grant updates.
Okay.
Um, the opioid reduction grant, right around the $14,000 mark. That's going to be going to the governor and executive council, and I'm hoping we'll hear something in probably February. And then I was contacted by the Office of Highway Safety earlier this week, and there may be a potential grant funding opportunity for that speed sign. I had applied for but was shot down.
Yeah.
We may be able to acquire that this year relatively soon, which would be awesome.
On a corollary to that.
Sure.
There were some short-term recommendations.
Yes.
Have they, have they at least embraced any of those? Have you heard any?
The last thing I heard is that they were going to, they received the letter. They appreciated the timely response and the town's reply. And that they were going to bring it up at some type of committee or meeting that they had.
For the short-term solution.
Yeah, I'll follow up with him and see if I can get an update for the board.
And as a courtesy to you, Mike Tar of Central Regional Planning attended the planning board last night. And he affirmed this last, this past week that was, we're in the queue for the long-term range.
Beautiful.
On the Central Regional Planning.
Good.
So, and he said, "We're number five, but that can change a lot."
Sure, sure.
So there's progress. And he was just flabbergasted that we made it so high and we're in the queue. So he's flabbergasted in a good way.
Good, good. That's good to hear.
Okay. Thank you. Woody? In fact, Woody, come on up. You're up next anyways. We're going to close public comment, and we're going to go into, uh, issues regarding safety and work hours. Bob, I'm going to let you help me out here.
I think because Dave and I, you know, are looking at the entire picture. I mean, Dave knows that some people have to work additional hours. I guess...
Bob, let's start, start back from the beginning, just to give you a little heads up for why you're in here. We've talked a couple of times in the meetings, you might have seen some of the meeting minutes, about safety when yourself or anybody else goes into the transfer station. Some of you guys open the gate up. Some of you guys move trucks and equipment. And we were looking at reasons why somebody may have to go there and work alone because we're looking at it as a safety, like, say you slipped on ice and nobody come in for a couple hours after you or not at all that day. We were looking at ways to make that safer and also to look at, we were looking at regulated hours so that other people would be there. And we didn't really know your schedule or shift, and we talked about it a few times. And I'm like, until we know why he has to go in on a particular day, maybe let's say a Friday afternoon, for a reason, whether he's going to move a truck or not, I said, "We should hear from you because you're the department head." You know, you're, you're the one that's there alone more than probably anybody. So we were looking for feedback on that so we could try and make a decision whether we regulate hours or try and make it safer so that there's two people there.
Yeah, if there's any way of rescheduling some of the things you are doing, if there's any way of doing that. Because being alone, and I know, you know, we have some departments where there's one person, but the department is one person. And you have the ability at times to schedule things, in my opinion. There might be an ability to schedule things when there is someone there. So at least you have some kind of protection because unfortunately you work around a whole lot of different machinery. So, you know, it presents, it could present a problem. Something happens and, you know, you've got no one there till, it might be a couple hours, you know?
So instead of trying to make some decisions without knowing your schedule or knowing how your hours are laid out on a typical week, I know you're going to have non-typical weeks that are going to come up, whether it's vacation or whatever. But if we're on a typical week, how you set your hours up and what times you would be coming in alone and what your activities might be on there. And that's why we kind of ask, have some of that written down or, even though it might have to go further than what you've already written down to get a better feel of it. But that's what we were trying to do.
And actually, this is just to bring it to your attention, and hopefully you can go back and come back with some recommendations to us. You know, because trying to think off the top of your head without really putting some effort into it makes it kind of tough because you're just going to give us the reasons you have, and I just want you to look at it and see if there's a way you can change that and modify that.
You might say, "Instead of staying late Wednesday night, I'd come in Thursday morning when there's already people there and move a truck or do something." So on your own, we're looking, have you, you know, look at the schedule and see if you can kind of refine it to, you know, having people there so it's a little safer environment down there because there has been some injuries down there this year. Some are fairly small, some are a little bit more significant, but what we want to avoid is the significant injury. It's like, God forbid, you hurt yourself on a piece of machinery and you're on the ground below freezing, and it doesn't bode well for you at the end. And we don't want that. No one wants that. We're avoiding their whole weekend. So I don't know if we want to have you...
No, I don't think...
Go have them take a look at it and come back to us.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer.
Come back with some recommendations.
Gives it a look to see where he can make modifications.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah, probably the best thing to do is to write it down so I know exactly what you're looking for. So, you know what I mean? Because I'm taking it right now, and come tomorrow, I'm going to be like, "What was it?"
What do we, what do we have? We'll have Lee send a copy of this section of the email?
Yeah, that way I have something that I can refer back to and go, "Okay, this is what they're looking for."
Yeah.
And, you know, recommendations from you where you could implement changes that would make it work. In other words, I guess the goal is to have a backup if you, two people working as a minimum. That would be one goal. And sometimes it's impossible.
When you can.
Right. Typically, the way it's been set up, and it was because it's come up before, is the machinery, as far as the compact, the, as far as the balers, they don't, they're not to be run unless there's two people there. That's, that's, they don't get touched. You know, unless it's throwing the switch on to put, because the heaters, especially this time of year is the issue. The heater's got to be on. We don't typically have them on all the time. But if we know there's a cold snap, or I get there in the morning and it's colder than it was when we left, throw the switches on. And that's part of throwing on and let the oil get warm. And then when staff gets there to get going, they're already ready. Typically, that's not what's going on.
Right. Yeah, so if you look at that and give us some recommendations to how you can maybe adjust your schedule, but it's more the stuff coming in when the other guys aren't there, whether it's to move a truck or haul a truck or tarper truck or move canisters.
You mean, it sounds like you're already on top of some of it, so it's quick.
Yeah, yeah. In some of it, it's, it's kind of redundant to have a second person there. If I got to do a box, there's really nothing for that person to do other than to stand there. So we're kind of going to pay somebody to stand there. You know what I mean? It's not, that's like, that's like a one-man operation. There's no...
It is. And I don't think there's any way to get out of it 100%.
Right.
Working alone.
Right.
But minimize as much as you can.
Right.
I was going to say, there's some of those things that could be done when someone else is there too, you know?
Right. And some of the other things that we come upon, like I came upon today just to give you an example, is the timeframe. I have X amount of time to get to a certain spot like this today. And then I had a meeting scheduled at 11:00, so trying to put that into the mix and make everything happen, sometimes it's, you got to kind of flex it around a little bit. Where I loaded the truck last night, yeah, last night when people were there, we loaded the truck. I loaded the truck. And it's ready to go in the morning. So all I got to do is check the oil and go. And, you know, that trip today ended up being, is the first one I've ever made, ended up being over a four-hour trip.
Right.
So you kind of got to put that into the mix.
Because we were looking at it to maybe jungle hours or make standard shift hours for even you down there. And I said, "Well, we should get feedback back from you." And also, I come from a field where people generally work more than eight hours, so...
Right.
I know that that's, you know, in a lot of businesses, it's still very, very hard to get just an eight-hour shift. It's a lot of, a lot of companies work over that shift. But what we're asking for more, more than changing the hours, is to try and make as many of those activities have two people at them, even if it might seem a little strange that we're going to pay somebody for staying there not doing a heck of a lot.
Right. The other thing I try to do when I go in first thing, like for instance, this morning, well, not so much this morning, but in other mornings, I'll go in, get the truck warming, you know, running, check the oil, get it all checked out, get it warming up. Then I go in and do paperwork, stuff that I haven't done, stuff that's got to get documented in the books or whatever. I'll leave that. I try to leave that so I have it in the morning. And then when I'm ready to go, we're ready to go. You know, when people show up, we're ready to go, kind of thing, get things lined up so when, we're not staying there waiting for stuff to go. Go get warmed up and ready to go.
Okay. And I have one more thing, just that I want to give you a heads up. This is something that you brought up, how certain recyclables are no longer profitable. What I like to do, and Bob recommended, you heard me on this, and Dave, this is new to you, but the thing is, we've got an NRA activity report, and they showed that we showed, recycled about 210 tons of material last year. The thing is, as you pointed out, you said some of the stuff is not profitable. In fact, it's costless. And so I like to have a workshop where we can sit down, just banter some ideas back and forth because it's, it's not worth to pay people to recycle when we're not getting us an inch from it, a dollar from it.
Right. And that's one thing we're working on right now. We've actually stopped doing one product. And I'm looking, we got to finish up what we're, a product that we're doing right now.
Yeah.
So that I can ship it. And then in the meantime, I'm looking at going back to what I know we can move.
Okay.
And go back to the old, I don't know, the, back to the old days, the way it was, kind of back to the basics. Just because our markets are so insecure.
Right. So I'm looking at maybe latter part of March at the town meeting. I figure we could get, put our, just put our heads together and come up with recommendations. And I was just looking at some labor numbers. And the thing is, here we are paying people to do sort, and like, we're sorting for nothing.
Right. And like I said, that's one of the reasons we, we dumped the product.
Yeah. And so I just want to give you a heads up. And things, I'd like to get some people invited to that meeting to where, if you could think of anyone you'd like to invite to that meeting who'd be helpful to the work, that'd be great. So that's just courtesy heads up.
Yep.
And I said, probably after March town meeting.
Yeah, at least.
Okay. And we can discuss the reports, recommendations, remain, to make, you know, I did a quick calculation. You won't believe it. But the thing is, we could save a lot of dollars if we didn't completely do, picked and choose what we recycling. And I think you already started that down the path.
Yeah, we've already shut down some, some ways that we were doing it before, just...
And Bob pointed out to me that some of the plastics that we've been recycling, there's no market for them anymore.
Right. And actually, that's one of the ones we stopped.
And it ends up in, not to China, but it ends up in the ocean.
Yeah, not this plastic. This, this was a little heavy. I saw the thing on TV.
You too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not this plastic.
That was amazing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, okay, we'll leave it at that. But I, you get the, I'd say just latter part of March, Lee, we'll set the date, and we'll have it, probably in early afternoon, very an hour or two.
If I, um...
If you think of someone you want to invite, more power to you, okay? Because we want to get some input from the town. I heard, who's the person you told me earlier?
I don't know if he's available. Ralph Feldbaum was part of the setup of the recycling. I don't know if any of those...
No, actually, he wasn't. He was involved with the single stream part of it.
Oh, okay.
They were pushing for the single stream.
Okay.
But the thing is, we, we'll get, need a great at that workshop, okay?
Yep.
And we'll just look back to hearing back from you with, as far as the hours. We'll do that probably next week more than, next week maybe, two weeks.
Give it a little time.
Two, three weeks.
Yeah, because the next couple of weeks, they kind of...
Yeah, we have a couple of busy meetings.
Exactly. Absolutely. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Interesting, right there.
It is, because the thing is, what I found was, at 200, $210, 210 tons, and we pay $70 a ton. And the thing is, labor, if you count two men labor, it's cheaper to actually not recycle, not recycle it and send it in the mainstream.
Yeah, the problem is, you're not putting the other side of the puzzle to it.
I know. That's why we need a full picture.
There's, and that's not the total.
I am sure you got it.
Because I don't do all my business with them.
And our end, yeah.
That's what explains the...
I did probably another, guessing, another 80 or 100 tons with someone else.
Lee was, came to your defense and said to me, "There's more to it than just that report."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. But then it's something worth discussing. We may change nothing. We may come up with recommendations. We'll leave it at that. Okay. Gentlemen, you've been on the emails, and let's talk about security, monitoring. Lee, you want to take the lead on this one? Just, and just give a little background, or shall we just go from here?
Well, I provided the board with two security companies from security monitoring. One's a little bit cheaper. I've heard some grumbling from some of the employees that either the equipment wasn't working well or the service wasn't up to par. So I thought, before I get into another year's contract, it'd be, might be worth my investigating the costs associated with this. And the costs are comparable, about $88 a year less, but...
You said you had two?
Yeah.
New ones?
No. I had the current one and then the other company. Most of the companies out there want to install new equipment. They'd rather not pick up and use your equipment. Where ours is all, are all fairly new, and they're all similar in products. It would be an easy transition to work with them.
Oh, here's the 760 I was looking at. One thing I asked Lee to give me a copy of when I came in, guys, was, at the end of Rich's emails from All-Star Security, he gave us a balance of 100 and, or $760 balance due before he will allow those security codes. And he gave us a breakdown for the different departments, and he kind of put it at a start and end date to their contracts. And Lee said this was a yearly service, not a contract date that was adjusted differently. So this payment that he's asking for, I think, is another incorrect payment. And somehow we have to get to the bottom of that so that we can get those released. And what I'd like to do is have the new, or the proposed company come in next week so we could ask them about resetting those all on our own, or having the new company set them.
To go back, piggyback on you. He has two emails, and they are two separate messages where he said, "We were paid through December 31st, 2018. And this new contract, when this new invoice came in, the start date was, for all the services, all the different locations, was one January through December 31st, 2019." So on two occasions, he said, "We're paid up." And then when he got word that we were...
Shopping around.
Shopping around, he throws us another bill out of thin air with $600. And that's...
Four, it's a...
Seven hundred.
It's 820 with a correction of $133, and the total due is 760 if he's going to release our code, which it seems to me we're getting. And if you remember, the billing that he sent us was not written, not correct or is not correct, one of the two.
Yeah.
And so right now, Lee needs to refer this to our attorney, and he's communicated with us only through our attorney. He's been so notified through our inspector and company that he used to communicate directly with her. And she's, she knows the predicament of when, how we need those codes.
Yeah.
But I like the other idea though, too.
She's asking for this contract that he says we're in. I've never seen a contract in 14 years that I've been...
So I'd like to, I'd like to get the other company in front of the selectmen next week and ask if we can reset these codes on our own for even a small fee.
Yeah, there is. $100 per. But because he gave us a quote to initially set them up, I think he can adjust that in that small fee to incorporate the cost of...
That $100 for, he needed the access codes to do that with.
No, that was to replace with a brand-new code. $100 per unit.
He must have to replace a hard war.
It's a, I don't know if it's a flush.
What was the $440?
That would be just to reprogram them. But where he's coming to do...
So it would be reprogramming plus an additional 100?
That's what I'm trying to get him to remove, is to reprogram because he's going to be starting from scratch.
So have him come in next week and sit in front of us, and we'll try and get it under.
Yeah, okay.
Bob, you have any favor of that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But I think we found that, it's Mary and Jeff, right?
Yeah.
That don't need the security part of it. They need the fire part.
Yeah, those are questions I want to ask them because I've come to find out we have fire alarms and security alarms. And Mary is always befuddled because she said she didn't know what they would be stealing from the library besides books. So she wasn't sure why she had to have a fire alarm and a security alarm. So those are things we may be able to ask the new company and maybe even save on additional costs to the town.
And I asked Lee to pull out the previous year's bills, and they're all billed with annual monitoring.
Exactly. From one, from year one, from day one to the end of the year, correct?
Yeah. So that should have nothing to do with any type of perceived contract.
I don't know how we got those screwy dates and set it up to bill all of a sudden.
I think they're the original dates that he started on the different various buildings.
Right.
And...
But they come back and ask us for almost a half a year worth of payments. Didn't make sense to me when on two occasions and previous years, it was always on an annual basis.
So I'm going to give this package back to Lee, and if you can have him come in. Now, Lee, whatever he needs to do to look at the different departments before he comes to us next Thursday.
He already has.
He has. So he's seen each building.
He is familiar with our equipment. He has, monitors that type of equipment, and they've been in business for over 25 years.
All right.
They're called Cooks.
Get them in front of us so we can get it signed and squared away.
I have a problem with that. Great. Okay. All right, now let's move on to the workshop meeting. Do you have some updates for us, Lee?
Workshop meeting.
We'll talk about the budget.
So in the minutes you read, I went a little bit further with the wording to include the item by item of each fund so that it's a little bit clearer for the...
You want to go down through your yellow numbers, Lee?
All I did was in the last column, as I subtracted the proposed budget for 2019 and subtracted the 2018 budget. So, and when you speak on the budget, you can say that the executive, for example, went up 4,872. And then election went down.
Oh, so the 4,872 is a change per year.
This is a change per prior budget. So these are the numbers you guys discussed on Monday. And this is just to make it a little bit easier when you're, you're presenting it for the public hearing that those highlighted items, if you consolidate it on a summary sheet, would be the easiest way for you to look at or explain the budget section by section. And if you go to the summary sheet that I created for you tonight, Dave, you asked me to get a snapshot picture of the whole budget. And so I provided the bottom line general fund total.
Lee, can we go back to this before you go?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I know that we'll revise this before we do town meeting anyway, but the numbers highlighted and the darkened numbers above them aren't really reflective of the totals highlighted.
That's correct because the...
Some of the items are miniscule. She pointed out the major ones.
Right. So the more recent ones were the ones that you discussed on...
Right. Because as we go through the budget hearing, we can go by the, some things go up so miniscule, I say this office-wise. But the thing is, the public...
So we should just put the large ones highlighted here when we do the budget?
Correct.
If somebody asks us.
Correct. That's, that's the whole point of...
We don't need the small ones, yeah.
Correct.
The thing is, if you remember last year, I was trying to, I went, I went through the budget, and I was going to like, say, the yellow figure here. And then I got a member of the public say, "Aren't you going to go line by line with your member?" And I said, "Okay."
What member was that?
You, it wasn't a member, it was a member of the public. And I'll protect the innocent here. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to sit down with Lee, take my notes, and then I'll make the presentation as we did last year, and I'll look to my peers to help me out and augment me as I see fit. As you guys see fit to augment me, because I may be missing something. I won't see 100%.
Okay, so we're at the bottom of that page, and you're at 148.
Correct. That's the change from 2019 proposed budget from 2018.
And we had like 146 the other night.
Right. And when we met on Monday, I pointed out that there were some adjustments that I would have to make because of the new officer and the warrant article and moving funds into the budget. So I have the actual 2018 funds remaining as of today. We may see some very miniscule outstanding 2018 invoices.
That's a 65,000.
But those changes, we were at like 59 last week or less.
Okay.
Now we're at 65, so that is...
Yeah, we had 57.
Yeah, 57, yeah. Because I recall moving about seven or eight grand from the warrant into the general fund because we paid those incidentals out of the general fund. So for the, for your information, the amount that we have today that's going to lapse from the 2018 is the 65,042. And as we discussed on Thursday when we reviewed the excess revenue, we collected 237, 798 in excess budgeted revenue plus your lapsing funds. So your excess funds for surplus comes to 302,831. Do you understand where I got those numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. So off to the right, we have, you wanted to get an idea of what the warrant impact would be and the budget. So on your right is the warrants for 2018, total of 84 cents. And the warrants proposed for 2019, total of 66 cents.
That's if they all pass.
If they all pass, yeah, that's correct. So down to your bottom left is the proposed budget. We anticipated, or we're projecting, a 2019 revenue to work with of 1,129,341. And I plugged in a number just to get a flat operating tax rate impact like you asked, Dave.
I was wondering how you came up with the 255.
I had to play around with that number. And by adding the revenue that we're projecting, the 250, using 255 from that 302, I brought it down to 1,162 divided by the assessment, and that comes up with $3.74 for the operating budget, which is exactly what we proposed to the voters last year.
So that leaves a delta of... So that leaves a delta of um, of three oh two minus two fifty, uh, minus two fifty-five.
That's correct.
And that would, that was the money we would put into the reserve?
That would lapse if you did nothing else with that.
Right, I think that's a healthy amount, Dave, because things, the op- the budget went up a little bit. So you wanna have a reserve call up commensurate with that.
So one thing I wanna point out also is that because this year, we're only proposing sixty-six cents on, in warrants for impact to the taxes versus the eighty-four cents, we're actually gonna see the towns, if, if ours assessment stays the same or increases, we're actually gonna see the estimated town tax impact drop twenty cents. So you have the operating budget at three seventy-four, your warrant articles at sixty-six cents for an estimated town tax impact for two thousand nineteen, based on these current assessments, for four dollars and forty cents. But if you look over to the right, the operating budget tax impact that we proposed was three seventy-four. Uh, our ta- our warrants with eighty-four cents, so the estimated town tax pa- uh, taxes that we proposed before the voters was four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And when we set our tax rate, they did a rounding and we, our, our current two thousand eighteen uh, local tax rate is four dollars and sixty cents. So you can see how we set it at four sixty.
Now, should that say two eighteen down on the bottom? You, you'd sent a note with this email.
Did I not fix it? I did fix it.
That was last year, yeah.
The email said two thousand nineteen.
Oh, it did on your first email.
It was supposed to say two thousand eighteen. So is that clear enough for you, how I just put that together as a quick snapshot? So uh, what I'm getting at is if you don't wanna use a two hundred and fifty-five and you wanna use less, so you'd see an increase on the operating budget, but because we're asking for less on warrants, you can still get the tax rate for the local.
Now, your proposed budget was twenty-five forty-six and that include the increase of fifty thousand.
That's correct, yeah.
Include everything we put in there.
So it included everything in there.
Everything that you requested on Monday.
So we have three oh two, um, eight thirty-one. And you wanna know how much we should put in the rainy day fund?
Well, the thing is, it's, it's gonna be about uh, forty.
We talked about eighty or ninety thousand.
We're about fifty thousand right now. We're, basically, we're basically two fifty-five minus three oh two.
Yeah.
That makes the tax rate flat with the.
Fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven thousand.
Will actually be twenty cents less because we don't have as many warrants.
Because the warrants have to play in there, so we could actually, with less warrants, we could actually put more money into the rainy day. It, it's, I, I think uh, fifty thousand is plenty for the rainy day fund.
Okay.
Bob, what do you think?
Oh, that's, brings you to the other sheet.
Right, I wanna know how much we have.
Fund balance retention.
Here we go.
So um, the current amount retained by the DRA for tax rate setting is four hundred seventy-seven, oh sixty-one, which is five point seven eight. They recommend five percent minimum, which would be four hundred twelve thousand, six eleven.
So we're already almost at six percent, Mike, so.
And then when I looked at the financial statement.
Five percent, this is where we're at, we're at five point seven eight current amount.
We should have a few, but some of it's retained for other stuff, remember? This is DRA. How much do we have farther that's committed, we've already committed on, on like uh, capital reserve funds?
So by the financial statement with the auditor, um, the four seventy-seven is a combination of, of unavailable funds, which is earmarked for warrant articles, two hundred eighty-six, six sixty-seven. And then the unassigned fund balance of three fifty-five, eight eighty. It's, they're off by a couple of dollars.
So two eighty-six?
And three fifty-five.
Two eighty-six committed.
Three fifty-five, yeah.
So our real.
Yeah, we're gonna finish.
Yeah. The other one's a capital reserve funds.
So of the three fifty-five and change, we'd, it will be approaching four hundred.
That doesn't make, that doesn't.
I, I used the wrong numbers, assigned which would be for.
Assigned.
Assigned would be for the warrant articles, one eighty-one, eight twenty-nine. One eighty-one, eight two nine. Plus the three fifty-five, eight eighty, comes to five thirty-seven, is that more? No, that's not.
No, it should be about four seventy-seven.
I'm trying to figure out which numbers he used for our fund balance for our. Four sixty-three.
Well, because some of those have been expended, that's why.
Yeah, but this, he's always a year behind, but what they provide to the DRA are the numbers that we use to set our tax rate. Five seventy, four sixty-three.
So it looks like if we're using three fifty-five and we had another fifty-seven thousand, it would gonna be right at the five percent minimum.
Yeah.
Which is, which is just over, which is four twelve here.
Right.
That's correct.
So we'll add fifty-seven thousand to that. Five percent retained would have been four twelve for four seventy-seven or three fifty-five. It'll be.
Very close.
Very close.
Bob, you see that?
Yep. Add a fifty-seven, I think, to that, right, like we said, or?
Yeah, it was uh, yes, it was uh, two fifty-five minus three oh two, fifty-seven. No, not fifty-seven, forty-seven.
Um, let's see here.
Yeah, you're right.
There's thirty-one, I guess.
I think you started saying fifty-seven, we picked up on it.
Forty-seven's a little bit more realistic, close to fifty.
Yeah, forty-seven, forty-seven, eight thirty-one. So again, you, you can choose not to use all the surplus I plugged in it, you can change that number.
Alright, there, there, we have one risk and I wanna address one risk. And the thing is, I think it's important, I like to retain a little bit more in the town because the uh, we have the lawsuit that's going on between public service, not, not public service, but Energy North. And that's when all the municipalities are fighting. If they prevail, that means our tax rates will go, I mean, that, that, the uh, taxable values of all the power lines will go down and our revenues will be severely uh, hamstrung. So that, that would have to be made up in tax revenues next year.
Yeah, but if that is, that would change the tax rate, Mike, and we could use some of this money to apply towards it, but it shouldn't be, this is more of a rainy day emergency.
Right.
That, that really would be raised in taxation and not so much in emergency.
Yeah, because it would change the tax.
Yeah.
That doesn't get impacted, that doesn't get impacted by the change in your valuation.
No.
Alright, but if it's just, again, it is a rainy day.
They'll probably change, they'll change the rates of how that works and now.
Yeah, a lot of times they'll negotiate reducing the value over so many years and to set uh, an even.
They won't allow them to do it all one year, even if there's a change, it'll be set so it's gradual, okay? So, and they might, they might set the value lower but increase the value because they're doing the lines over it.
That's right.
So it's gonna be kind of a wash, I think, so.
Well, if we had just forty-seven in, we're over, it brings us over four hundred thousand, we're just at the five percent level.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm happy with that, as long as we're putting money in, we're reaching the recommended levels.
Yeah, and I think next year if our revenues look the same and we don't have this uh, as much of an increase on the town side, we can look at it again next year and decide if we wanna put in more or less substantial.
But the fact that we're gonna be dropping the town portion of tax rate, you guys are okay with that? Because again.
Yeah, it's ever so slight, it's twenty cents, so.
Yeah.
But last year was only like three or four, it was less than five cents. It was like, we dropped it last year.
Yeah, we made it even last year.
We made it even on the operating budget, yeah.
So dropping it this year is a good thing?
Yeah, like twenty cents.
Yeah, it's still, it's rather than increasing. Alright, let's have a show again, so once their tax rate raises, tax rate's increased. See, look at that, public comments right there, no one wants.
So, so as of today, there are no changes to the budget, you're all happy with what we worked on?
Yep, I, I, it was a good work session.
Um, there's only one thing I saw when I reviewed your budget numbers there. When we were reviewing the budget numbers, I thought we wanted to have five hundred dollars go to the local church.
It's in the same line, I just used, I put a slash.
But you, you made the total fifteen hundred.
Right, a hundred, uh, five hundred to the local church and a thousand to the salvation army.
Okay, is that how we did it?
That's how we planned it.
But it's gonna be on, shared on the same line.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I just changed the description with a slash.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, no, any other questions on the budget?
No, I thank you Lean, that's good. Uh, I just, okay, I just need um, some time to uh, sit down with you and uh, compare my notes with your notes so I, we can be compared, I can, I can be prepared.
We have, we have time, we have time.
Yeah, and I think we'll break it out sectional like, like we did last year and sign different sections and that works real good.
Especially where, with the warrant articles.
Yep.
The department that has to speak to it shores, you know?
Okay.
I mean, we really don't have any.
Well, it was a big.
Irresponsible type warrant articles that are coming up, you know?
Alright, at this point, uh, we're still, uh, scheduled for the non-public, so I'm gonna go right into the, the, continue the uh, agenda. First of all, Lean asked for some pictures of the uh, of the uh, of the new bridge and Don Morrison did a great job, take a look at that. This is a, for the report for the town cover. I thought uh, I thought that's fantastic.
So he asked me what I, what I was working on for the town report cover and I said, and I said, well, it's really my baby, I wanna put the Stark Bridge on there. And he said, me too! He left and took pictures and sent me those.
Yeah, that looks really nice.
So I gave him the font and um.
And you would ask me for a picture of the um, town pound after it was cleaned up with the guy standing in front of it. I'll forward that to you as well.
Oh, you have it?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
It's in my phone.
I'll, I'll put myself a reminder to get it from you.
But the road agent's name isn't anywhere there, parentheses, his name should be.
I'm pretty sure he doesn't want to run. He should be standing on the bridge. He needs to jump.
He didn't sign it.
No, no one signed it yet.
It was a nice day.
I, 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 I think that's great, that, that's a great thing, Bob, you can.
You know what, yeah, I don't see a problem because there's, there must have been so many people that have bumped into us and asked when the bridge was gonna go in. And yet they knew it was getting closer to the last year coming up.
Yeah, yeah, the end of uh, two thousand nineteen.
Anybody from the public wanna see a picture of the bridge?
Yes.
Certainly. Send it around the room, we don't.
You could have Jeff here fishing.
Joe, is, Joe, is it his face on there?
Yeah, fishing for another warrant.
He'll be here shortly. Ask him for a picture from the bridge.
Yeah.
I'm looking for the, uh, public, does any comment on the budget?
You're on side.
So we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
That's, that's way in-house, we're gonna have, we're gonna get.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, exactly.
I think I should probably provide, get ready to provide the summary. That, that, yeah.
I think that any adjustments you can make will be done next year.
Oh, yes.
You've addressed everything this year.
Okay, next thing, Lean, we wanna talk about the town cover index. We did the cover and now let's talk about the index.
Okay, so in past years, we had a little um, misunderstanding of uh, clarification for town committees and non-town committees. And um, what I had proposed to the board was an index separating other organizations from the town committees. And personally, I thought it worked extremely well. But as I put the town report together, I feel like it makes for better reading if I have everything related to transfer station, like N N R A, which is not necessarily a committee, right with the transfer station report, so it's, it's smooth. And I think it works well, I'm gonna attempt to do that again this year. I just hope that I don't um, make people unhappy with the way I set it up. But I think it, you know, the planning board having central New Hampshire regional planning behind theirs and on, go, you know, forward.
Makes it more readable.
It does, I personally think.
You don't have to keep going to back of section.
Which, yeah, looking for a different part of the department that you're trying to, you know.
Right, but that's reflective of the departments.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but the non-town committees.
Yeah.
Are gonna be in the back of the book, correct?
That's, that's where I've, um, if I do the no, again.
I give she, let me.
If, if you're saying non, what was that again, non?
Town committees.
Town committees. Just committees in itself, not organizations, just the committees.
Organizations in town that aren't part of the town itself. Such as the uh, uh, you have the Historical Society, you've got the Garden Club. They should be in the back of the book.
Okay.
So they're not confusing people as being part of the town committees.
The other organizations like she's talking about, ones that have to do with planning and zoning being in the book?
Yeah.
They, I don't have a problem with uh, where the departments are working with another entity.
Okay.
That's a different thing, that has to do with them performing.
And you might even put on that page of those non-town committee or organization. You know, even though it's in the section.
Yeah, because how I had, just so I can explain it, how I had uh, set up the um, report initially is the front section is everything related to the town. The back section is everything related to the school. And then the Garden Club requests the last page, that's their request. Because they want people to open the back sheet and say, oh, there's the Garden Club. And then reads across Dunbar and wants the inside of the back cover. So those are requests by them, put them specifically in the back.
Is a corollary to that, are they paying money for that?
They are, and my, my, quite, my concern is that I'm gonna put the Historical Society in the back and people are gonna turn around and say, oh, here's the Historical Society. So unless I note that it's not on this report, it's not a town committee, I just feel like that's part of the town side, even though it's not a town committee.
What happens is people come up to you thinking that they're an organi- uh, they're a committee in the town, which they're not, and it confuses everything, and it confuses your uh, your, the uh, not the town hall restoration, I'm sorry, that's another one.
Historical awareness.
Historical awareness committee.
Yeah.
Confuses that.
Right.
And people don't know where their, you know, what is the town and what isn't the town.
But my only concern is that now the Historical Society's picture will be viewed quickly because it's in the back and then people will have to search for the historical awareness because it's in the middle.
It'll be in the town committees, so.
Okay, alright.
I mean.
That would be the only one that I could think of.
If we congregate all the town committees within that certain section, everybody knows that they're part of the town committee.
Yeah.
And the other ones segregated to the back so they can decide what they wanna do with it. But at least it's not in as a town committee.
With the exception of those ones where they're directly related to like, the central regional planning is related to the planning board. And N R A is directly related to.
Is that what you?
That one?
No, I don't have a problem with any organization that works with a department.
Right.
Providing information, that's totally different.
Right, I agree.
That's totally different.
We agree with that.
Private organizations that are by membership only should be in the back of the book, they're not town committees.
So I think we're just looking at the one, right?
Well, the, the other, the Garden Club's one of them, I know.
They, they choose that, yeah, and then the Historical uh, Society.
Okay, there's a, also a problem, Lean, I wanna make sure that um, uh, there's uh, we have a certain weight we have to make for postage.
Yeah.
Alright, in event, the priorities gotta go to the town committees before any uh, non-associated town committee. If we're gonna drop anything, it's gonna be, we're gonna ask them to shorten it or they're gonna be dropped.
Right.
It's gotta go, priority's gonna go to the.
I think she's having a good job shortening some of their letters in the past.
Yeah.
Right, but I think she's also got um, she was slapped, she's also got slapped for shortening and editing some of the.
I, I, I won't edit anyone's report, I'll ask them to edit it. But um, the school unfortunately, they might do a page and a quarter. And that takes two pages, so then do you run the reports simultaneously with another report starting after that? Or, and I just don't think it's fair to the second person wanting to present a one-sheet page where there's one that's got.
Well, you'll present the layout to us anyway, won't you?
Yeah.
With the school, we just, just uh, I guess the school, just, the question is, please avoid white space, correct?
Yeah, but.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
In other words, if you can squeeze two organizations in the school on one page, so be it, we want, we need to avoid white space.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it, it's gonna boil down to the weight and the, and if we can't ship them by mail, we're kinda like, or the price goes up.
I think she's done a good job worrying about that.
Right, but the thing is, there's been, there's been uh, uh, I think Bob pointed out, there is, there's been some committees in town, they get, They get, like, why does the Garden Club have to get the back page? They don't. They don't, they, they can be.
No, but they pay for them.
I understand.
And that's what they want in the back. And I don't have a problem with that.
We got to be nice and there'd be no flowers in town.
Oh, I agree.
For instance, just, just to point out that the Garden Club, when they went to using colored paper, paid for their own colored paper.
But the thing is, one is, U N H Corporation, who do they work with in town?
They actually provide Meals on Wheels, Fuel Assistance and everything else related to what?
U N H Corporation?
Oh, U, U N H, U N H is more on the.
I thought they did some work with the town forests.
No, there's other things. There's community activity that, that I think.
Sort of tests. We're using them right now for sort of tests with the town.
A farmer.
Kerber.
Huh?
Kerber?
Kerber, yeah. He works a lot with the U N H Co-op.
All right. Well, the thing is, I would say, keep, I, I'm going to diddle with Dave's.
I don't have a problem pulling out non-town committees if my wait is over.
Okay, well, shorten it in there. In other words, lend them to a full page or a half page.
I'll put a link. Say, here, follow this link.
All right, we'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I'll diddle, I'll diddle Dave.
I will move that one in and.
Use your best judgment with the guidance from Bob.
Okay.
And the organizations that you're talking about, like the N N R A, only embellish the others.
Correct, yeah. Makes the recap good reading because it all flows together. Okay.
Okay, get that done. I'm going to, time is now, Dave? Okay, we're going to go through some of the mailboxes. We've got a great letter this week, if you saw the inbox, it was, it was initial that. It was from the Department of Environmental Services complaining about town of Dunbar using some, doing some construction work by Kimball Pond Road. And that the beauty of it is, we have a permission letter from the same organization to do the work Kimball Pond Road. So Jeff has handled it. And they also have, instead of sending it to the town of Dunbar, they send it to the School Department. So where, Lean is on top of that and Jeff to correct that. That's just information only at this point.
It's because the kids take the total rocks.
So I thought, I thought the, Jeff came right back in with, with the documents showing that he had permission. It was, it was directed by the, the same organization that corrected. Okay, next in the inbox, just as this for the public. The school budget hearing is February sixth at six P M. It's scheduled, and the annual meeting for the Dunbar School District is March ninth at three P M in the afternoon. Both of those meetings in the elementary school. The budget hearing is going to be in the library, that's in the upper portion. That's just information. We're in the upper portion. Upper portion, in other words, in the community center, there will be the general meeting. And the budget hearing itself where they do the school library.
School library, that's what you didn't say, that's what. School library.
School library, yeah. Dave, you asked for some more, just more information. That was just an information request for you, that was in the box for you.
I sorted it by population and by salary on each page. It was different.
And this is just, this is going to be posted on the, on the Hot Topics, but the, we'll have a public hearing on our proposed budget on Thursday, February seventh, beginning at seven thirty P M, in this room. And then we have a snow date of Thursday, the fourteenth.
Sorry, the fourteenth.
Already posted on Hot Topics.
Yep.
Woody, you lost another employee. We got a notification, we got a formal resignation from one of his employees, from one of his employees. Ben Wright is working well, but he's off to doing bigger and better things. So I, I think it's good for him, bad for us, but I think it's, we wish him well. And we'll just go from there. We may have to readdress, we may have to address finding another person. As the, the process continues, we'll leave it that way. Just, uh. The town court provided, or just gentlemen, this is information for you, the town court provided or ours, so we can report them appropriately to the National Retirement Court. So that's working, working private, that's action taken.
I'm going to slip that in later. You didn't talk to Jeff, right?
Jeff did tell me he was coming.
Yes, he did. I, I brought that up. All right. Chief's here. We have a, a dilemma, we're going to maybe modify the schedule so we can keep on schedule because I promised a non-public at eight fifteen. So Chief, in, in the spirit of, of moving, moving things along, we're going to talk about resource officer. You got about fifteen, we'll take more than fifteen minutes, you think? Okay.
All depends on you.
Oh, we're, we're, we like to talk a lot. But we're in listening mode now.
Hey, gentlemen, you have the floor.
Do you have a chance to look over the documentation that you got there?
Actually, you got it on Monday. Did no one bring their copy with them?
I have a copy here if you'd like to make some copies. There's some notes on there, but.
And that's what we're waiting for. That's why we left hours ago.
Yeah, the basic gist of what we're trying to accomplish is to convert, modify, hard-time, regularly scheduled hard-time thirty-one hour position into a full-time school resource officer commission, uh, uh, position where we would maintain what we're paying now and any additional cost would be borne by the school.
I see in the meeting that Lean had with, I'm trying to remember, it was a productive, there was a meeting of minds.
Yeah, it was close, the numbers were relatively close.
Which is good, okay. Yes, I saw this.
So at least as far as that goes, it's in the zone.
Okay. How many, how many hours a, a week now as a part-time is she's been spending in the school?
It's hard to think of. Quite five years change.
Okay, but she has been spending.
Oh, yeah, we're heavily invested in this.
Okay.
We've been working with the school board on the wording of the warrant. And the financial impact that we figured out would be seven cents on the thousand for that fiscal year nineteen twenty figure, the twenty thousand seven six two.
How many cents?
Uh, seven cents on the thousand.
For this year?
Uh, for their school's fiscal year nineteen twenty, yep.
So nineteen twenty, okay.
Yep. What we did is, you'll see on that sheet, you'll see D E S fiscal year nineteen twenty, the figure of twenty thousand seven six two. What we did to try and offset that initial cost is working with the school's fiscal year of July one to June thirtieth. We proposed a start date of September ninth, so that would require funding for only forty-two weeks as opposed to fifty-two weeks. To try and offset that initial cost. And then the, the D E S fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the twenty-five seven oh five figure is based on today's numbers. That would be the full fifty-two week commitment for the school.
And that's about thirty-five percent of the pay.
Correct. Yeah. We tried to keep it, you know, what we contribute now is around sixty-six percent. And then the school would pick up essentially the cost to convert the position to full-time.
Would this person, would this person report to the school? Would the, the chain of command would remain the same?
The police department would be.
Right, it's all mature.
Primarily, if, if there's an emergency or there's need for, for, for first, and the other duties would, would come second to that. What this would do, it would provide more time for her to spend into the school. We'd probably expand some of the things that she does in the school. So during the summer, we have the additional, um, full coverage during the week.
And these wage breakdowns here, this was a full year on the top?
Yes, the full cost, the seven two, six thirty-four, that's the total package.
Okay.
And then you'll see under the police department cost what, you know, essentially we're already funding for that position. And the whole goal behind this concept would be the school picking up essentially the cost of converting this position to full-time and not, not the police department.
As you know, there's, there's nothing in our budget to, to fund this position.
But if you look at, if you look at the aggregate, though, it's still tax paid.
Well, it is, it comes out of the same, it comes out of the same wallet. We know that. And we've given that a lot of consideration. The, the thing is that as you gentlemen have gone through the, your own town budget and made decisions on what you would and wouldn't fund, what you prioritized, the school did the same thing.
Yeah.
And for them, this, it never would come to this point. We, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't a priority for them. But it's enough of a priority that they want to, to post it as a warrant. And so if, if they're willing, if, if it's important enough for them to do that, we'll.
How many full-timers in the department currently?
Five.
Five currently, so this would be a sixth full-time.
Okay. And three, three part-timers, but one, two, two principal part-timers.
Yeah, there's three part-timers and they work, uh.
Six shifts.
Five, six shifts on one, yeah. So there's not a lot of time, hours up.
Similar sized towns, their forces about the same, or have you looked into that? I know we, we looked into some of that last year, but I don't know how this would affect it.
We did in the past, I, I didn't look at that. It's.
The, the, the problem with that is I think our proximity to Manchester and Concord will change with someone who's in the, in the, in the middle of nowhere. Because I think we get a lot of, I would say, blend in from Manchester and Concord crime. That's what I'm, that's the explanation you said last time.
Yeah, it's, it's true. And, and the, the things that makes this a popular community and the reason that the school and communities from is because of this proximity. You know, we happen to be close to population centers rather than.
No, I'm more thinking out loud, when you get to that school meeting, those questions will come up. So if you have some of that background.
Yes, those things.
Which I know you've provided for us before in the past, so.
And the, the nice thing too about this initiative is not only is it to benefit K two six, but all Dunbarton students, including those attending, you know, the Bow schools as well. So.
I'm, I'm just rethinking down the road. I mean, I don't know if this is going to be a, a transfer of funds nightmare or.
Oh, yeah, well. I mean, you just, I just had to, I looked at my expenses and had to move almost eight grand from the warrant from last year into my fund because I hadn't moved it and it put me back where I was supposed to be for my proposed budget. So at least I had the money to move. But it's going to be a, a little bit of a different.
So it could be.
In the, in the future, it's for the sake of simplicity, you know, the school department is for schools. The town budget funds police. And I see down the road that somehow if this is passed by the, on the town warrant at the school, the school warrant level, I don't, I, I can't, I, I really think, I see, I foresee the amount of money that the school's paying is absorbed by the town side down the road. Maybe not this year, maybe next year.
What?
It just doesn't make sense to have that nightmare every year. And what, why should the school stop being involved in with a resource officer?
They, they are all the state. This is nothing unique to Dunbar.
No, but what I'm saying is from the, from the, from just a management of money point of view. And because it's all, it's all comes out of one pocket.
Yeah, this, this, absolutely, no question about it.
And this keeps it clean, I'm looking it down the road, I see, I foresee that happening. I may be wrong, but I don't, I, I hate to see the school start going off on other tangents and start funding other things they want, if it's overlap. And for, maybe they want to do grass cutting now. I'd be more than happy to let them do grass cutting.
Is that about Purdy?
I, I know, I know. But I think it's, it's a challenge when, when we have two different, two different entities. But it's a, the school is not really charged with the police department duties.
No, no.
And so that's where it gets, it gets difficult.
With security and safety.
Security and safety.
Inside providers.
I, I, I think that I would have been, if this came to us and asked like, hey, we want to have resource officer in, this is the proposal. So I'd like to see where the voters take it in, at the school meeting and we'll go from there.
Ultimately, they're going to decide.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it is, it gets, it muddies the water. That's, that's just a comment. I, I, I mean, I'm just, that's one opinion. I'll leave it to you, Dave and Bob.
No, I know that the feds have appropriated to the state monies for, you know, security monitoring in, in schools. You know, there's an investment in that, you know, in the Lakes region, I, I think they applied, they got a grant. But there's any kind of grants for the, uh, offices in the school?
There's a, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. There's, there's what's called a COPS grant through the Department of Justice. And dating back to Chris Conley's tenure, the town of Dunbar has applied for that three or four times unsuccessfully. Typically, I know the chief has applied for it as well, and we weren't funded for that. So there, there is that grant opportunity out there. And the way that works though is it would be to create an entirely new position, not modify an existing position. So in this instance, that grant would not be able to be applied to this circumstance.
Looking down the road, maybe we could create a position next year, a limited position. Thinking out of the box.
Isn't that usually stipulation, you can't remove one and then you have to get.
Yeah, you can't supplant something.
You can't. It's pretty sparring, Mike.
Well, we have five, we'll go six, we'll go seven.
Again, I'm waking up. No more, no more grant opportunity.
Not that I'm aware of. I know that the COPS grant, several communities in New Hampshire did receive funding for SROs. But again, that was creating a position from scratch, not supplanting a current position.
Are you going to take a position at the, at the school board meeting?
We're going to, yeah, we're supposed to do that.
Okay.
Just not to offend anyone with the way they write, but there are people that are grant, that are grant writers that kind of go a little further than an average person trying to apply for a grant and going through that process. So I was just curious if, you know, there was an availability.
I'm not aware of anything aside from, from the COPS grant.
I've written grants for my previous employee that were funded from the COPS program, at least three positions.
Well, I would, and I wasn't pointing a finger.
No, I'm just saying.
There are organizations that, that all that person kind of does is.
Professional grant writers.
Grants, you know.
Okay, well, I don't have any more questions, Bob. Dave, any more questions?
No, this is, you know, the third time we touch on this now, so I think that I've got a good understanding of it now. And I think that, you know, your public hearing will take care of the rest of it, so. I don't have any further questions and I understand how the funding is. I appreciate you meeting with Lean and getting the numbers ironed out. We're all on the same page with those, so.
And the, and the fact it came in Monday, it briefed the board, it was great.
Well, I appreciate the fact that this isn't done within our venue. Because last year we were given a guarantee, you know, and people ask us these questions. And we told them, there's no new cruiser, there's no new police officer. So it takes it out from in front of us and it's, it's something that probably would have given us a little bit more of a struggle to come up with, you know, the funding and have to answer to people afterwards, you know, it's like.
Well, again, if it wasn't a priority for the school, you wouldn't be here.
And again, it's their priority, so they got to live or die by it. If it, if it passes, then we're going to just make sure they follow up on their end of it, whether we need to short them on one of the school checks or not.
We have a bad idea.
Yeah.
We have a really good relationship with the school.
We work very closely together in town. That's kind of where this, this kind of.
And I know that, you know, the school board has come to us as well as a group and tried to be open with us with everything that's gone through, so. I know that at least the time that I've been a selectman, they've been very forthcoming to try and make sure we're included in their budget, even though we're not, not part of it, they let us know what's going on.
I think both sides have been more responsive.
As, as it should be, though.
Yeah, right.
As it should be, we're all, we're all part of the same people.
And the, the nice thing, if I can just add, the, the person for this position is, is perfect for this proposed position. And there's longevity in this position. And again, the, the school, when we spoke with them, you know, they made it clear that if you don't have the right person as an SRO, it's not even a program worth pursuing. However, we have a person who would be outstanding in that position.
Yeah. And Chief promised me he'd buy me coffee if, if that person leaves. And there's no longevity to pay for that, no. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming in again. And I, I think you answered a, a questions. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to start the process. Would I can make a moment, Mark, if you'd like?
Yeah.
I have a few things. Well, let's talk about one with him in five minutes. Just very calm. Talking about my response to Mr. Delbert referencing that. Just for the record, Dave, Mr. Delbert is doing you an insert, injustice because he hasn't, has overlays. He hasn't submitted to the planning, I mean, to the planning and zoning department to be filed. There are some divisions. Okay, just want to make sure you.
He, he did submit a, we're just waiting for Dave.
Okay. That's still outstanding, but, darling, share with.
Yeah, I got four years, let's share them.
Okay. But this collection, he's still.
I'm holding my sister hostage.
But the thing is, without further details, he didn't really get back to us. And I had, I learned more about monuments than I wanted to learn about. Uh, and I had, I learned more about monuments than I wanted to learn about. I, I, uh, New Hampshire Central did not wanna respond to us, as Alina shared with us an email.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I still say that, um, it basically, I'm asking the question, why does he bring it up? And, uh, we do require inadequate monuments to replace the new subdivisions. And in this town, an iron pipe is considered an active monument on new subdivisions. Not existent, not, we don't go out and look around town looking for iron pipes. But the thing is, when a new subdivision is being created, the, all the, if there's existing iron pipes on the corners of the new sub, in the new subdivision, they have to be replaced with appropriate monuments. And a lot of people don't realize, but a concrete is considered an appropriate monument. And he may, there's rumors that he may have been confused with concrete, but I'm not gonna go with rumors. I'm gonna basically say, I'm asking a question, why do you bring it to the attention? And, uh, and just affirm to him that we do require inadequate monuments to be replaced. Now, the planning board chair in the audience, if he wants to comment further on that.
Well, we've been through this over the years, and that's where it stands, is what's in the subdivision breaks.
Okay. My response to him, I just want you to know, you saw the email. It said, uh, "Mr. Delberg, I am unsure why you bring this subject and request for action to the attention of the board of selectmen." Period. "We do require inadequate monuments to be replaced with new subdivisions," period. And that's the extent of my response to him. And if he wants to pursue this further, because he provides no details of why he brings it up, he needs to be more explicit on what job.
Is he doing a subdivision in town that you're aware of? Is he doing a new subdivision in town that you're aware of?
Yeah, we're generally aware, yes.
Okay. And so, but before he just makes a blatant, a blanket request.
But it's, it's his duty to tell us. I mean, if he's asking something specific.
Well, he could come in and ask for a waiver to your, if he wanted.
Well, it's already been approved, so he can ask for a minor modification.
Right.
Or something. I don't think personally he would fly.
Or during part of it, he could have asked for a waiver during it, because he had a monument that was stone and pipe or vice versa.
That particular job asked for several waivers, that was not one of them.
Right.
At the time, if it's months or, or a year.
So, I like to get, I like to get consensus on sending this forward.
I'm good to send that one.
Okay.
He can, he can, you know, identify the particular job if he wants to.
Exactly. And I'm gonna pass this to you for, if you could send that response back, it says, Billy, need it on there. Okay, now we can, I like to make a motion, then we go to non-public per RSA ninety-one dash alpha. Roman numeral colon three, roman numeral two, paragraph E, negotiation of town property. And Leo, please don't take it all down, because we're gonna come back into public afterwards.
We've already covered it.
You covered everything?